All right, it is six P M. We will call the Sartell City Council Meeting Monday, June eighth to order. First up is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, two amendments for tonight's agenda. One will be six W under consent agenda items, personnel committee recommendations. And the second one would be amend eight C, the Sock River Memo, which is under old business. I would, I'll make the motion to approve the amended agenda with those two items.
I'll second that.
Any question on those two items or other items of the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Amended agenda carries. Public forum, public comment? No one register? Next up is approval of city council minutes. We've got May eleventh, regular meeting, May eleventh special meeting, May eighteenth special meeting, and May twenty-seventh special meeting. Would look for a motion to take all four at one.
I'll move that.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Minutes carry. Next up is consent agenda. Again, that's gonna go from A to W. Looking for a motion to approve A through W unless someone's interested in pulling one. Is there a motion to approve A through W?
It's moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda carries. Next up is public hearings. First one is three oh seven Avalon Court vacation.
Mayor, members of the council, you have in your packets the vacation for three oh seven Avalon Court. And this is just a blown up version of the document also included with the application in your packets. They'd be looking to vacate the diagonal shaded area that you can see there, which is a old drainage utility easement that was for the pond that is out there. It has, they have had a wetland delineation and also we've had our engineers and staff look at it and all approve.
Council, any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of the easements for three oh seven Avalon Court, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? And we will close the public hearing. Council, any questions for staff? Seeing none, would look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving vacated easement.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
That carries. Next up is a public hearing on our MS four permit. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
No, mayor, council, I'll just add that this is something that we have to do annually, hold the actual public hearing to allow a comment period.
We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on our MS four permit? And if anyone can tell me what MS four means in the audience? You get something else. Other than the engineer. All right, we'll close that comment period. No action needed, simply needed to hold the public hearing. Next up is old business, safe routes to school, change orders. John?
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, I think you've kinda heard our wind of this project. This encountered a lot more bedrock than we anticipated. We do already have some base in the soil organs, but at every corner of the project, there's a bedrock. And a significant over run gap line item, which is the line shared the change order for you tonight. Also, in the change order was, we've been conversations with public works and contractor. We ended up changing the scope of the Seven Street North overlay. Instead of an edge mill overlay to do a full depth all the way across. Some of that pavement in the middle we just felt was gonna crack through too much and cost savings with that overlay. So I think approximately fourteen thousand dollars in the change order was to switch that overlay back to the rest was for that bedrock blasting. The other thing of no, you know, as with all, you know, unit price contracts, which most of your safety street projects are. You do have overruns and underruns and kind of in all the items throughout the project, obviously this bedrock is a very substantial one, which is why it's brought forward in the form of a change order. But there will be some other cost savings in various areas, so it doesn't necessarily indicate this is gonna be a flat increase to the final project cost. There's a lot of other things on this project yet to play itself out. For instance, we're finding some better subgrade conditions, so we haven't had to put some drain tiles and everything, create some cost savings. But nonetheless, I did want to bring this forward as a change order just because there was a significant increase in that bedrock. Look at, entertain any questions?
Council, what questions do you have?
So have they discovered, I mean, they're pretty confident they've got it, their arms around the bedrock at this point, they're?
We're done with it now. We're, most of the project is, will be paved by the end of this week, if not all of it. So yeah, we're, what's in your pack is it down the other bedrock.
Any update on the, I guess intersections when those will be, concrete will be put in? I know for Holiday and the strip mall hardware store?
Some concrete work is happening now. There is some head ramps that will be, I'm gonna be to all, they had to order some more truncated domes. Paving on the project tomorrow, they're gonna be paving in kind of the miscellaneous patches and piddly stuff. And then Wednesday, Thursday are when they're gonna be dragging the main line overlay of Seven Street North as well as Fifth Avenue. But there will be some miscellaneous concrete work left. I have talked to my inspector specifically about that. Order by the holiday, I'm not sure the status of that.
Okay, yeah, anything we can do to get those two done faster? Help commerce?
I can send them a message. I know the concrete people will be in town tomorrow, so maybe they can, if they weren't already, they can help us on that. I can maybe direct their attention.
Okay, thank you. Council, we'd be looking for approval to change order one.
I'd move to approve that.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next up is Shields Athletic Compacts request for funding. I think that's what everyone's here for. Council, I'll, I'll kick this off as I've served on the, the arena board for a couple of years now and have some line of sight to this. The, in front of you, you have the formal ask from the Sartell Youth Rec Center or the arena board on how to fund the arena. You're aware there's been a tremendous amount of success from the board, from the youth hockey in fundraising. Something that our community hasn't saw to this extent. And we have, as a, I guess, global economy, gotten to a period where fundraising's hard to come by. There is a gap in, in that, which is being asked by the city. Furthermore, the project scope has adapted or changed. It was originally planned as a outdoor sheet of ice that was covered and possibly some side coverage, but really just a roof on it. Personally, for myself, being part of that group, that wasn't an economic driver for us. That would facilitate ice time for practice and potentially games, but really just practice. And it would really just get practice availability. To be an economic driver, I felt and many others felt, that an enclosed sheet of ice would allow the tournaments, which would drive the economic community for our restaurants, hotels, and other shopping. And that really from a city is what we'd be looking for. So in front of you, you have the formal ask. It's been a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over twenty years to help cover capital and operational gaps. There were some additional upfront expenditures that they were asking the city to cover, which would be city fees such as sack and whack, some engineering, and then some demolition work that our crews could potentially do. Super excited and proud of, of the work that our staff has done, along with the board members from the arena. And I think we've got it to a point, or an option at least, for our council to consider tonight that has less impact on our general fund than what we maybe had expected initially. So upfront, there'd be the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our half cent sales tax that's left there that is earmarked for recreational amenities. There is the golf course lease payments. We've talked about that in workshop, that we would transfer those lease payments over to the arena. Those lease payments run through, Anna, correct me, the twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-two? So we have a lease on the, the nine hole golf course right now until twenty thirty-two. That's totality of four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. At that time, twenty thirty-two, we would have the opportunity to bring that to market or to re-lease to the current tenants. But certainly that would continue on in some capacity beyond that. We would commit that to the hockeyer, the, the new arena through twenty thirty-two. Building fees, whack and sack fees, demo the outdoor rink, estimated about seventy-two thousand dollars. Again, some work that our crews could do. And so there's some upfront fees that we would need to talk through. But the biggest item, and I think the, the most creative item, is a conduit bond that was brought to light. And it's a bond that we can do, or the arena can do on the city's behalf and leveraging the city's bond rating, along with tax exempt status, which will allow their interest rate to be fixed for a twenty-year bond. We are, we've been guided that that would be between a two to a three and a half-ish. We're hoping closer to a three based on our bond rating. And that's fixed for, for twenty years. The arena's currently looking at something in the private sector, which is a three point seven five amortized for twenty years. But I believe that was fixed for a four, maybe four and a half.
Five.
Five, fixed for five years. And so expectation is we can, we can work together there and save substantial amount of interest costs for their funding. Which we believe gets us to their ask. At, at some point in the future, as their projections show today, there may be a funding gap. But I believe that, that is positioned well beyond the nine-year mark. And so our upfront contributions, along with our ability to allow them to bond, closes the gap significantly from where we're at today. So before I go further, council, questions? Comments on how we got to that? Tim?
There were some concerns initially about the conduit being, the use for the conduit following in line with?
Yeah.
How did we resolve that?
Anna, you wanna speak to that?
Sure. We were able to verify today from our bond council that the ice arena would qualify under recreational facility, under state statute, to be able to utilize the conduit bond. So it would be a qualifying use to be able to run through a conduit bond with the city.
Excellent.
There's a couple different, couple different bond options, as well as a lease option that our staff had explored. Conduit is one that does not, I guess, fall back to the city, if you will. The lease had some, some attractiveness, but I think all in all, conduit is, is certainly the best way for both parties to proceed. Brady?
And what is the timeframe when we would know and what interest rate?
Yeah, good question. We need to go through a regular bond council, bond rating process, just like we actually just wrapped up recently here. And that took, that process took us, you know, month, month and a half. So we would love to get that initiated and started as soon as possible. But I do have our financial advisor and bond counsel on notice. They're ready and willing, and they've been included on this project for a while. So I think we can move it as quickly as possible, as long as all of us are cooperating and working together collaboratively.
Okay, just concerned with their timeframe in November?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be tight to be able to get a shovel on the ground. But our goal is to make that happen this summer, yeah.
Thanks.
So the initial, just to be clear, the initial impact of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for twenty years, that will go away?
Yeah, and, and I think it'd be good to have Craig Ritter step up here in a moment. But what we've compiled would, would equate to a one point nine three three million dollar commitment. And again, that's comprised of the golf, golf course lease, that is four hundred and fifty thousand. As we value that, as we pay that upfront over the twenty years, we've got a valuation on that of closer to eight hundred thousand dollars. And then there's other fees that we would waive in combination with that. And then, you know, if we're able to save, if we're able to get them three percent, I think that was equated to about fifty thousand dollars a year in, in just interest savings. That eats away at that one thirty pretty quick. You know, I, I think there's, I won't speak for the, the group here, but I, they would love yet additional funding on top of that. I just don't know that that's needed between now and potentially year eight. They've got a lot of upfront, but operationally, I think there's a ton of change that will come with that between now and eight years, you know? So what that looks like?
I think, you know, I, I actually saw this type of project, I wasn't part of it, but years ago, over in the city of Isanti, in Cambridge Isanti Youth Hockey, I think it's a great program, you know, allowed them to build a beautiful arena, and that's where their program is at today. So I think overall, it's a great, a great idea for the community. And with, as I've said before, the, the girls hockey taking off like it is, it's definitely gonna help with ice time. So, you know, the fact that we're, we're not using that hundred and thirty thousand dollars for twenty years, the commitment, that's a lot of commitment. I think it's a really good idea, just going forward in the right way.
You know, I think we're just talking numbers right now. I think there's, which is prudent of us, I think there's also, literally right now, we're still getting emails as a council from public support. And so they may not know that we started at six o'clock tonight, but last count, I had like forty-eight emails about this. And I think we've saw, as we've gone over, we were all witness for the Craft Hockeyville, as we were there when the FSN game or the Wild game was in town. This is a group of people that can rally and can draw support. I had printed out just a handful of the emails that, that really spoke to me. One from a local realtor. We've got Topin Merrill, who we supported, and talking about the, how do they attract professionals into the community? They're losing, Sartell's losing to Saint Michael Rogers Elk River Becker area right now, and spoke to the activities of their children. We've got restaurant owners, we've got medical clinics. The, the overwhelming support for the project has been awesome to, to see and witness. And it's not just hockey, we're talking in the context, or I guess I've been talking in the context of this being a hockey arena. It's lacrosse, it's football, it's softball. I was quoted on W J one one time thinking it was a golf dome. But the possibilities truly are endless of a concert venue, so I wanted to highlight that. Comment, any other?
Yeah, questions? You said we're gonna, you're contemplating four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the half cent sales tax paid upfront?
Yep.
How are we gonna do that?
We have just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in our half cent sales tax fund.
Okay. So the half cent sales tax income for the last six years, or five years, has been six million one hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, plus an additional hundred eight thousand in trail funding. So that's an average pre-COVID intake of one million two hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. With our current debt that we're obligated to pay out of that money, we have five hundred sixty-nine thousand from community amenity phase one, two hundred and thirty-two for community amenity phase two, and four hundred and forty-two thousand for Pine Cone Road improvements, for a total of one million two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That is what we pay every year out of the half cent sales tax on our current debt.
Yep.
Basically, that money is already spent.
So if you're?
So to get the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're anticipating, we're gonna have to get pre-COVID numbers in our sales tax, plus a little bit more. Because right now, we're essentially even in bringing in what we're paying on our current debt. So I'm worried that we're committing four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in half cent sales tax money that we don't necessarily have. The other, the other concern is, is that if we commit that money right now to the arena, then our options for using that half cent sales tax for anything else, committing it to anything else, has gone to twenty thirty-eight. So that's, that's a big concern I have. I, you know, I, I want to try and make this happen, and I want to support the hockey program. I think they've done a great job of raising money. I think they've done a great job of, of creating something that is, is useful for Sartell. The other concern that I have is the golf course lease payments that are currently going towards baseball. What they, I got an email from Jason Mathiason today, what they use that twenty-four thousand dollars a year that they get, which they haven't gotten this year because we delayed the first lease payment. So they haven't gotten that money yet. But he uses that for basically spot repair and repair of fields in particularly worn out spots. So we'd be taking that money away from baseball and committing it to, to the arena. And we're taking that, that lease money that, quite frankly, the lease payment on the golf course, I think has been renegotiated four times since it was purchased. So my concern there is, we're not sure, or I'm not sure, that the golf courses is gonna be able to make their lease payments as they're supposed to. And if we're telling hockey, here's twenty-four thousand dollars that you're gonna get every year until the, the lease is expired, and that falls through, then we're shorting them again. And that, that, that creates problems for us. The, the concern that I have is Sartell's current debt right now is seventy-seven million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. And we pay five, five million five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars towards debt service every year. Our income for the, for the city, what the city brings in each year is roughly eighteen million dollars. Of that, six million five hundred and sixty-two thousand comes from property taxes. So the, the rest of our city budget that we use to run the city, to run police, to fix the roads, everything else, comes out of water and sewer, sack and whack fees, surcharges, a lot of the very different things that we're talking about here, grants, LGA, money from the state, and that half cent sales tax. What I would be more comfortable with, and, and let me just ask you a question, and maybe someone can answer this for me. In looking at the letter from Mr. Ritter on June fourth, twenty twenty, it says that the city administration has already committed to covering five hundred, five thousand five hundred dollars in current sewer and water, sack fee of thirty-six nine, whack fee of forty-five eight fifty-two, sack surcharge of eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents, and then the tax of three thousand four hundred ninety-six. Have we, have we committed as a city and as a council that we are at this time going to waive that? Has that a decision that has been made?
That decision has not been made yet.
Okay, all right, so I, I appreciate that clarification. Another concern that I have is the, the money that is being requested, the eleven, the eleven thousand three, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars a month for the twenty years. That's gonna be going essentially to operating expenses. But my question is, is, is why is the school not contributing to this as well? I, I got information today that the school is a tenant of the rink, they pay for the time that they use, they pay for their operational needs. My question was, how, since the school is gonna really benefit from this as far as ice time, practice time for the high school hockey teams, and additional field turf time for the various and sundry teams that are gonna be in there, why is the school not contributing more towards the operation of this facility? Outside of the simple rental amount that they have to pay every year so that the hockey teams can, can play and practice there? Why is that, you know, why is that coming back to the city to, to shoulder all of that burden? And that's, that's a concern that I have that hasn't been addressed adequately in, in, in my view. What I would, what I would be comfortable doing, or what I would suggest we do at this point, is go with the conduit bond funding. See what that gets them as far as an interest rate, see what that gets them as far as a savings on interest and savings on their monthly payments over the course of, of the loan amount, which is the, the twenty years, which is locked in. Once we know where that number is, then we can turn around and look at what we need to do as far as various and sundry sack and whack fees and things like that, which I don't have a major problem in, in waiving those. It's, it's not money out of our pocket that we're giving, it's kind of just money from our po, or to our pocket that we're not taking in. So it's, it's not really hurting, hurting the city's bottom line in that. So it's, it's not really hurting, hurting the city's bottom line in that line. But then we can really evaluate what they are because from what I understand, the the main thrust, the main reason why the association needs to have the commitment of the hundred and thirty thousand dollars is so that they can go to the bank and say, here's our operating expenses, here's our budget, here's the money that we've got coming in. It'll, it's all, it's all good to go, it's green light, we can go ahead and get the loan that we need to do to to get the project rolling. But if we can do the conduit bond and get them the funding that they need without having to to make that pledge, then I think we buy ourselves the opportunity to get their funding in place. They're gonna have the funding for the, for the, the building, then we can come back and see, okay, now, what what can we as a city do to help you going forward? What can the school do to help you going forward? And also, now that you've got a shovel in the ground, you can start your private fundraising, uh, non corporate, non business fundraising, but just your, your uh citizens, which I think in the long run gets us to where we wanna go, but also creates a situation where the city isn't pledging money that we don't have in our pockets. At this point, we don't have that money ready to give. And uh tying up uh funds and, you know, ultimately other councils down the road in their ability to to operate, particularly where it comes to the half cent sales tax.
I'll take a um comment on a couple of those. Half cent sales tax, uh, that is funds we have today in an account. We have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an account today. Uh, you might recall, uh, while you and I were serving on council, under a previous council, we had bonded for those at a, I believe, a three percent, uh, very conservative level. So even by spending the four fifty, uh, our half cent sales tax portion between now and twenty thirty-eight will continue to grow and there will be funds that'll continue to come in that. The delta between what we achieve and the three percent growth that we had bonded at, that delta will be, will replenish the funds over time. To what extent, um, I I, you know, trying to understand what, you know, COVID has done. I do know for the uh following year, our half cent sales tax, if you recall, that's a that is a formula based on population and the sales tax collected in your jurisdiction. Our share of that has grown for the following year. So, um, we do know that that's on a growth. I think as we look at at the effects COVID had within the retail space, uh, which would affect that half cent sales tax, Walmart and Sam's Club didn't slow down, the mall shut down, right? And so when we, when we weigh out, where's that half cent sales tax being collected amongst the five or six communities that are as part of that pool? I think there's a conservative belief that will continue to grow um as, along with our population. So, half cent sales tax, we do have that four fifty that isn't spending money that we don't have. We do have that that came in from a bond sale that we did, so that is sitting in an account. Pinecone Central Park funding, um, two, two items. And um just tonight on our, in our packets, we had the six thousand dollar check that went out to Pinecone Central Park. We fund them about sixty thousand dollars a year, separate from um the occasional lease revenue that they would utilize from the golf course. And so, uh, I served on that Pinecone Central Park board for a a number of years. They are great stewards of the funding. Specifically, and I know Jason very well, uh, specifically the golf course lease dollars are kind of the extra. When they have a project, a capital improvement project, that's what they utilize them for. They come ask us before they utilize them, the last two years they have utilized those. They are not committed, uh, and that is something that we had hashed through when uh Mary was still um on staff, as she was part of those conversations. So those are the two that uh, I guess I I would speak to. Very timely question about the school. The uh, and so I won't speak to that, um, but maybe there's others in the audience that could address some of the questions?
I'll just add to this, the school's been a great partner in this whole process. The school has agreed to increase their usage, which we've talked from the beginning that we're looking at bridging both capital and operational gaps. So the school has helped significantly bridge the operational gaps and they, and we benefit from a capital standpoint, seeing that those operational gaps are closed.
And how much money will that be estimated over twenty years?
Estimated over twenty years, if they use all the space that we're talking about using, it could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year over twenty years. So that's actually more than we're asking the city to contribute. Now granted, they do get the space to use, everybody understands that. But the economic driver that we hope, and we acknowledge that this is for the city, we're hoping that you're getting a return on your investment as well.
Do we have any other, while we've got Chad up, any other questions uh for the rec board from anyone else? No? Mike, any further questions?
The, the only question I have is, it it's more of a concern than a a question, but you mentioned Walmart and and Sam's Club didn't slow down, but every restaurant in town did. All the, uh, most of the retail shut down. You know, I, I, I think it's a concern to assume that the half cent sales tax replenishment is gonna come in at the same rate that it was pre-COVID or that it's going to grow at at this point. We simply don't know what that's gonna do. So, I I guess, I guess the question is, uh, I guess the the question I have is, are they interested in doing the conduit bond? And if so, can we put that piece into it, holding off on on the other financial commitments until we see what the result of that bond application is and then go from there?
Really quick, um, again, we had bonded at at a three percent level, which was very conservative uh for the, for the half cent sales tax. And so we have that money. I think the first two years of collection was, I don't know if you have in front of you, but it was seven to eight percent growth out of that. So if we, again, conservatively say between now and twenty thirty-eight, uh, we simply grow at three percent at that conservative level, we're not going backwards, right? We've got that money.
Right, but we can't assume between now and twenty thirty-eight, we're not gonna get a recession. We can't assume between now and twenty thirty-eight, we're not gonna get a natural disaster that affects the the community. I mean, you're, you're making an awful lot of very expensive assumptions.
Well, a- and and I would put that back to you that we can't assume we will. And I would say that if by spending that four hundred and fifty now that's in our account uh and and utilizing tho- those funds to drive something productive and uh an economic return in the community will help us weather the storm when the next recession hits versus hoping that we're gonna sit on four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is gonna somehow save us in a recession.
But we don't have to sit on the four hundred and fifty thousand. My point is, is if we give the four hundred and fifty thousand today, then that is gone.
Yep.
That is gone, which means when uh basketball comes in looking for something, when another amenity comes in looking for something, when the, uh, we, we're looking to do something with the parks or what have you, we're, we're, that half cent sales tax is tapped out.
For this year.
For this, for this year, and then we're gambling on what it's, on what it's gonna be. So, you know, are we, are we prepared to basically get ourselves in a position to say no down the road, simply to be able to say yes tonight without taking the time to see what the conduit bond can do in in how these, all these numbers need to work out?
I I do see, you know, Mike, I see your point, and I do wanna know a little bit more about the funds coming out of that half cent sales tax. This would be a great time to have our finance director here, but we don't have one. So, um, i- it is important to get that, but I think that, you know, based on what we know in the direction we're going, I would feel comfortable moving forward with it. Obviously, we, we need to know, know more about this conduit bond, can it even be done? And that's gonna decide what direction that we as a city can go in, so. I agree somewhat with you, Mike, in in the fact that we don't want to deplete our, every penny of our sales tax, but this really is a one-time fee. We're not gonna pay this out every single year for twenty years. It's, it's just what's in there now. We wanna make sure we have enough in there, though, to cover our debt that we already have committed, so. Um, I believe uh we do, and I think that we're good to go. Uh, we just need to to get more information on that conduit bond.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a process on the conduit bond for, um, you know, having the the bond hearing and and the sale and whatnot and uh understanding the timing of that. And I think if approved tonight, our staff needs to work with the uh, the arena board to figure out the timing for construction and and funding construction and everything else, so.
And and, I'm sorry, Brady, go ahead.
That was a question I was gonna have for Chad. Does that, does that month, month and a half change anything far as the project still being shovel-ready in the fall?
I don't believe so. We were looking at August, shoveling the ground in August. And we're ready to go out for bid, we're making sure we're, we've got everything uh buttoned up a little bit here. We know in 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 part of your answer, were we willing to go with just the conduit bond? And and I don't wanna say just because that's a significant amount of money. There's still inherent risk, as Mayor Fitzsim said, that still comes to the hockey association. It doesn't go to the city. So, we need the conduit bond to help us get there and to help us be a little less risk adverse. We're, we're ready to take that risk. We know we still have funds to raise. We're asking a lot of our membership and continuing to go out and raise those private funds. But the additional fees, and I may have misspoken the letter, the additional fees that we're asking you to approve, again, help us curtail that risk. And that is a large risk to a nonprofit organization that's raised three million dollars privately already. And that's what we're trying to minimize is our risk. There is still a risk for this project. I can't stress that enough, everybody sitting out in front of you knows that. We have work to do, but you guys can help minimize that risk and we can keep this project moving forward tonight.
May I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, like I said, I mean, the, the sack and whack fees, the surcharges, the building demo, uh, or the permit fee, the, the site demo, all of those things, that, that's not Sartell opening up a wallet and saying, here's money. That's us saying, okay, we could have taken that money in and used it for for other projects or other things. We're gonna not do that, we're gonna basically wipe it off the books. It saves you money, it 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 lessens your risk, puts you in a better position. Again, we're not handing out monies, so, you know, that's something that I can live with, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. You know, I, I, I certainly think that that's something that, you know, would be, would be fairly easy to do. You know, what I, what I would like to do ultimately is, you know, have an agreement that, you know, we're, we're gonna waive the, the sewer and water, the sack and whack fees, all the things listed here. You know, we'll waive those things um so that you know that you've got that in your back pocket. We do the conduit bond, we find out what your interest rate is, what you can borrow, what what the interest rate is. And at that point, then hockey can sit and say, alright, here's, here's what it's gonna cost us to run the new sheet of ice, here's our operating expenses, whatever, here's what we're paying out in our, in our mortgage payment, here's what we've saved with the sack and whack fees, all that sort of stuff. Now, all that has now sifted down to a bottom line of, this is what we need over the next twenty years to to make a go of it. So then, you've got the shovel in the ground, your, your private fundraising is good to go, you can start doing that. Then we can come back and say, okay, now, do we need to kick in the, the four hundred and fifty thousand for the half cent sales tax? Is that something we have to do at this point? Uh, do we have to to commit the, the golf course lease or or what have you? You know, I love the idea of the conduit bond because it means that the city of Sartell doesn't have to give, write a check each month for for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I lo- I love that idea. I think that's great. But will that process that I've just kinda outlined work for you guys?
Say, I I've been plugging in the numbers as we've been kinda tweaking. Sorry, uh, what we've uh been discussing.
Go talk about tweaking.
So if I take out the, the four hundred and fifty thousand that we're talking on the sales tax, I take out, I I left in the sewer and water because you just said you're, you're comfortable with that. If I take out the, the golf course lease, ultimately, we're at about a ninety thousand dollar shortfall per year. If I drop down to two and a half percent, which I think is pretty low rate already, looking at um going with that. So, so we're still sitting at about a ninety thousand dollar shortfall if we take out the rest of that stuff. If we keep that in, we're sitting at about that break even or even a little bit below where we know we have work to do. That's where we're looking at right now.
And does that ninety thousand dollar year shortfall, does that include funds that you think you'll be able to raise?
Yes, that includes the community-based estimates.
So then, it would be a situation of saying, okay, city, can you kick us ninety K a year? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
The ninety K, yes, that's the four hundred and fifty upfront and, yeah, I mean, that, that equates to about that ninety K a year.
Okay, and we give baseball, what, sixty K a year now?
Yep.
So, you know, si- you know, thir- thirty K difference? You know, is that gonna kill it, you know, is that gonna kill us as a city? Probably not.
Well.
You know, so, you know, if, if, if the process that I've outlined works for you guys, you know, can we, can we agree to do the conduit process? You know, and and council would have to vote, but I, I doubt that the other, that me or the other guys are gonna have a problem with uh, you know, waiving the various fees that we've talked about. And basically, we, we move several steps forward without having to commit that four hundred and fifty thousand half sales tax and the golf course lease, which helps out baseball. And it buys us time to see exactly what the numbers are. And at the end of the day, maybe what we're looking at is a difference between what we give baseball of sixty thousand dollars and ninety thousand dollars.
Point of clarification, the four fifty year is already in the mix of that ninety thousand. That's the ninety thousand that you're short is the one thirty payment for twenty years.
The, the ninety thousand that we're short would be if we did not get the forty fi- four hundred and fifty thousand upfront or the golf course lease. That's where we'd be sitting, yeah.
And another thing that we still are assuming a lot of risk with no guarantee at the end of that. I mean, there's, you're asking us to basically go in knowing we're at a one point five to two million dollar shortfall over twenty years. And I know you're saying, oh, the city will be there, but that's where we're asking you to be tonight.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's the concern I have with it, is that we're handcuffing a project to say, go ahead and start building. We got your back, we're just not ready to tell you that or stamp it that we got your back tonight. I think it, it's undue that we would, we would delay, potentially delay the project and not happening because anyone uh looking at the project saying, you're gonna start building before you've closed the gap of ninety thousand dollars a year, to me, that would be troublesome. And if we've got the ability to, to set this up on the front end, I, I see zero reason why we wouldn't.
Well, except that this.
Hold on, I just wanna, anyone else got? Okay, Mike?
Okay, the city just four years ago spent seven hundred thousand dollars building a parking lot for the arena. Okay, so that's seven hundred thousand dollars that the city's got into that already. The hockey arena went forward with this project, got everything rolling for it, did all the fundraising, not realizing or or not knowing that there were gonna be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a month shortfall, which is why they're coming to us.
I think that's unfair to say as the scope of the project has changed. If you look at the scope, what the scope of the project was, they could fund that right now.
Right, but that's not what, that, no, it's not unfair because that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the project that they've got now, that they're applying for a loan for, is a project that, as it stands now, with what they've gone to the bank, that's why they're coming to us is because the bank is saying, we're concerned about this hundred and thirty thousand shortfall. We can eliminate that bank's concern by doing the conduit loan.
Which still doesn't eliminate the risk, financial risk that they're facing of the shortfall. It's whether you have the bank telling you, you can't, you won't be able to make all your payments, or whether you inherently say, I can't make all my payments. Whether the bank's involved or not, there's a deficit there of, which they've talked about as, as we sit here today, uh, would be ninety thousand dollars.
The, the flip side of that is, they're a private organization. This is not a city project. The city doesn't own the building. The city owns the land, receives no monetary compensation from the Hockey Association for the use of the land that the arena is sitting on. Is it the city's responsibility to, to bail out private, non-city entities when they run into budget shortfalls?
Is it our, and I'm not sure how to answer that. I, I guess I would take the view of, I think this is one hell of a private-public partnership that's generated three million dollars of private funding for a multi.
Corporate funding.
What's that?
Corporate funding, not private funding. Okay.
So, I think it's a great project. I think we've deliberated this pretty, to a full extent. I did share, just, I, I shared this via email, so everyone has it in front of you. It is a public document, obviously, as we're talking about it. But as I go through every line item, I wanted you to be able to see it in front of you, so you've got it in your email right now. And I guess I'd call for the motion that, and I'll, I'll put it forward, I guess, is that the city would commit the golf course lease payments in its entirety. We would commit four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the half-cent sales tax. That'd be upfront. We'd waive the building permit fees of sixty-two thousand dollars. The whack-and-sack fees of two hundred and five thousand dollars. The demo of the outdoor rink and shelter, which is seventy-two thousand dollars. Dirt work and utility work, seventy-two thousand dollars. The monthly utilities of eleven thousand dollars. Again, that's, um, those are public utilities that we would waive the cost for, as we do today. And then we would also include the conduit financing option. That is the motion that I would put forth, and I would be looking for a second on that motion.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate that we haven't already talked through? Mike?
As I've indicated, I want Hockey to be successful. I want this project to be successful. I think I've outlined a way that we can be successful without committing the sales tax dollars and the golf course lease money at this time. I think those two funds are shaky as, as far as the long-term commitment. I will be voting no on this, and I'm not voting no because I don't want Hockey to be successful. I'm not voting no because I don't want the city to help and find a way to make this work. I'm not voting no because I don't think Hockey's a great thing and, and that this is gonna be a great driver, economic driver for the community. I believe all of that. I'm just not comfortable at this point guaranteeing that four hundred and eighty-some-odd thousand dollars in four hundred and eighty-two thousand, I'm sorry, the four hundred and fifty thousand from the sales tax and the four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from the golf course lease. I, I would have preferred to be able to throttle things back a little bit and see what happened after the conduit bond. That's not an option, so I will be voting no for that reason.
Okay, point of clarification, the utility bills, the monthly utility base, bills that are waived, that eleven thousand is actually the annual, not the, not the monthly, so. Point of clarification on that motion. Is that good on the second?
Good on the second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Next up on the agenda is the Sauk River Regional Park. Who's taking that one, John or Anna?
I'll take it. Chime in at times here. On your, on your chairs was an updated cover sheet that, you know, included the amended gender change. As you know, we've got a couple of different funding sources to spend at the Sauk River Regional Park. One is the DNR grant that has about four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars left in it. And that was largely the change tonight is through correspondence with our contact at the DNR. We realized that per an agreement that was set place in twenty thirteen, the money from that four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars has to be spent on the park to build the restroom and trail improvements, essentially. We've already bought land with them, and we've already built a park and all of that, so. I've adjusted this. Now, you know, quote-unquote, trail improvements, I think maybe has some elbow room for how we interpret that. So, keep that in the back of your mind. Also, and the one that's a little bit time-sensitive is the, the bonding agreement money of five hundred thousand dollars. That's the agreement that we have to have in place by the end of this month, and so, between Anna and I, we have the draft agreement in your council packet tonight. Other than maybe swapping out or exchanging the, the verbiage for what we're gonna build with that money, that agreement we're holding is sent to the state tomorrow, cuz it takes several weeks to go through their system to be in place by the end of the month. So as you can see, at, at staff level, you know, we've identified some items of the DNR grant, you know, and, and some of this was discussed at our council meeting last week. Add or subtract or change the scope, but what just kinda started the conversation with the DNR grant, we got the paving the trail from the parking lot down to the beach, about eighty thousand dollars. Fat Tire Bike Trail, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and a restroom facility, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That is so expensive because the utilities are about four hundred feet away, we've got to cut or drop all the way across, kind of like twenty. So, and staff level, I've kicked around some alternative suggestions, it's maybe even well, it's that they might be.
Sure.
It's about a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, that is just purely good utilities there. So that was on the list, at least for DNR, started the conversation. The bonding agreement, we picked up.
Thanks, Scott.
Got it.
I think you heard a couple of these last week, but, uh, the, the kind of.
Oh, Jesus.
The kind of core project with this money that we were proposing is a plaza with a shade structure, it's a picnic table, et cetera, down by the swim beach area. Also, we have a here floating dock, fifty thousand dollars, and some science improvements, a total of about three-five hundred five thousand dollars. And then, with the discussion playing on that, on the second page there, it's kind of a long list of other items. Lookout Tower being the most significant one, you know, that's a three hundred fifty thousand dollar item. So, it would probably be either that or the plaza, kind of one or the other, it's a core project, but, without walking through the rest of them, there's kind of a long list that, hopefully, they just haven't, kind of dialogued with the council as far as.
Sure.
Specifically, what we want to include in the bonding agreement, but really both funding sources are kind of tied together, so.
So, again, council, the, as you see on the updated, um, cover sheet, the top item is the four hundred and fifty-two that has to be spent at the park. We have not been able to legislate that to a different entity. And the bottom one is the five hundred, that is bonding money from the state. And as we continue to work channels in St. Paul, we remain hopeful that that could move over to Linear Park, which is along River Road, so. But again, as we talked at a, at a workshop, we have to plan something in that five hundred in case it doesn't, in case bonding doesn't happen this year or gets taken out of the bonding bill, we do have to spend that money at this park. So maybe we'll take it in the two items. First is the, the four fifty-two that we know we will build there. There's three items listed there, paved trail from parking lot to swim beach, which Mike and I both cited as important from when we've been there. The Fat Tire Bike Trail, and then Restrooms. Are there any things that we should be removing off of there or swapping with the second-page list?
Where would the difference come, uh, so you have five hundred and nine?
Versus the four fifty?
Yeah, versus the four fifty-two.
You know, and, and these are very early, very quickly put-together estimates, and really, I can see a scenario where, depending on which combination you choose, like for instance, the Fat Tire Bike Trail, something that we could just build less footage of.
Sure.
Bring it back, but, you know, not knowing which ones are gonna swap for which, I wasn't trying to hit exactly the four fifty necessarily.
So we'd have to cut fifty-seven thousand roughly, out of somewhere.
Yeah, these are, again, very preliminary estimates.
Okay.
Some extent, we didn't, final design is a little bit, the budget is.
I guess my concern, and Chief probably has a similar, is the Restrooms, or any type of enclosed structure there. I know we've got that agreement in place today where we have a restroom, but I would love to see, you know, the lighting of the plaza or other, other amenities that wouldn't enclose a building simply from a safety concern.
And, and I will say that our contact at the DNR has indicated that, you know, for that agreement, we need to build those items. We can request changes to that agreement, whether they get approved or not, I can't say, sitting here tonight, but we did.
Mike?
John, in your experience, are, are changes like that fairly readily accepted by them, or?
This was a little bit new to me, so I, I don't have experience specifically with this grant source or this specific contact with the DNR. In my mind, I, I look at, I think we could go to them with a compelling argument that, hey, the original budget for that bathroom in two hundred and twenty thirteen was seventy-five thousand dollars. And I think we go to them, take that a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just extend utilities and get it. You know what I mean? The, the bang for your buck is completely shot, and so I think you got a compelling argument that you can come up with a good alternative use of that money.
Okay. We didn't want a four, or a one-point-four million dollar bridge, and I, outside of safety, I don't know that I wanna have my name tied to a three hundred thousand dollar restroom at a park. I, I honestly think, as I look at the other options, the lookout tower, I mean, there's a lot of topography change over there that, you know. And again, it's, it's three fifty, I know you're kinda just throwing numbers there, but we could tweak that into a budget.
Yeah, well, actually, if we swap out that for the restroom facility.
Yeah.
You know.
That's what I'm saying.
You could, you could can that in DNR, the fact that, you know, it is kind of money spent on the trail system. Granted, it's a trail that's going up for lookout, but I think that's a, perhaps nice.
Is there a consensus on swapping those two items? Again, that would be an ask that staff would need to work with DNR on to get approval, but.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not a huge fan of a lookout tower. I, I don't know that there's a lot to look out in, in Sartell, we're pretty much a flat community. But, you know, if that's what we have to do with it, yeah, I, I think some sort of a pavilion or a barbecue area restroom facility, we could kinda put that all together into one area.
Or, I think Jeff, too, in the past, has mentioned, like, pier for fishing. I think that definitely would be something that would be beneficial.
And so that's under the second option of the five hundred from the bonding?
Floating dock.
And maybe that's moving that up?
Yeah, cuz like, you kinda got two lists.
Yeah.
Part of this, the other one is a list that we gotta be prepared to build, but we're hoping to maybe move it, so it's.
And that's a challenge that, in June, we're gonna lock into what we have to build, right? We should, the bonding done at legislature should be done by then, so we'll know if that five hundred's moved. But to put the, submit the ask now and let it go through their proceedings, that top section is really what we need to nail down, but.
You know, maybe if the. Maybe the lookout tower swaps to the restroom facility, kind of closing guns. Maybe the floating docks swap to the Fat Tire Bike Trail, which Y'all are looking at and making which, you know, can't leave the trade.
Knowing the usage that's down there, and I've, I've been down there a number of times this spring since we've been vacationing at home, I, I've noticed there's a lot of pedestrian and some bike. I think that that has the ability to draw more bike, mountain bike options down there. There's a lot of people that walk it and hike it throughout there. There is some isolated points down there that you probably want more traffic through, so if you can increase your movement of people and bikes and whatnot down there, I think you get more exposure and, and might flush out some of those problems. So, I, I'm a little hesitant on going away from the bike. It just moves people around the park a little bit, a little bit more exposure. But, I, you know, lookout tower or, you know, the destination at the end of the path along the river down there at the little plaza, you know, either or is, you know, I would say, appropriate usage.
I, I agree. I think that Fat Tire is probably the biggest draw of, of the list, uh, from a regional perspective, that the topography of that park or river area would be really good from a Fat Tire bike path. Which neither Tim nor I do, but.
What's the difference between a Fat Tire bike path and a mountain bike path? It's the same thing. Why are you looking at me when you ask that?
It's a Fat Tire, not Flat Tire.
I don't think we're educated enough to answer that question.
You know, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do, too.
So are you, are you advocating for eliminating the, the lookout tower and going with the bathroom plaza idea?
I like it as it sits right now.
I just can't wrap my head around a three hundred thousand dollar restroom.
Agreed.
Yeah, you know, like I said, you could probably drop a hundred thousand dollars off of it, I think it would accept it, but.
Well, can't we do the same as what we did in our other park? Was it Watah Park, where the, there's a picnic table area out in front, and then the restrooms are behind it? Or is that?
Well, I mean, that's, part of this, the, the challenge here, the cost.
Utility costs.
Utilities are so far away.
Yeah.
And even more so, the problem is they're all the way down there, kind of like twenty, so you have a ton of cost to dig up.
And I would say the BIFs now that are there are used adequately, they're, you know, they've got a fence around them, and, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's on the list, not so much that I don't think I've ever heard of, it's I or maybe the opposite, I just needed a bathroom here, but, the grant agreement, I got my hands slapped suggesting we might not build it, so it's, it's been agreed, sort of getting approved.
Yeah, we've kicked this issue around so much, I think this is probably the one issue that we just can't seem to solve cuz there's no real direction on it.
It's, uh, it's, yeah, money that we didn't lobby for, that's, it's got an expiration date on our term, so.
It's nice to have. It is what it is.
John, does that give you any sense of direction from us? Are you good with that?
Well, can you help John out?
Can you give John some direction?
What is, yeah, John? What is, what does the DNR do? There's, you know, how many DNR facilities around the state? There's gotta be something else that we're missing that we could use that money for.
Do you guys like the idea of swapping out the restroom for lookout tower?
Yes.
I like the lookout tower better than a restroom, yes.
Yeah, I like the lookout tower better than the restroom.
So, I'll leave here tonight, try, I'll, I'll attempt to work with the DNR to make that swap.
And then we could, we can determine the height of the lookout tower, whether that's a single-story pavilion or whether that becomes a multi-story lookout tower.
Maybe this is a three-step, self, a flat space.
Could put a restroom underneath.
Great.
No, I mean, I, I could also look at talking to them about, I think with the nineteen eighty, the plaza out by the rivers, Swim Beach could be your swap.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Does that get flooded down there?
Well, we'd have to build it up and away from the river a little bit to get out of flood.
After we build a dam down there, it'll be fine.
Could I walk across dam?
Building a restroom facility down there draws lots of maintenance issues.
Yeah.
And I'd be.
I'm trying to look at, if you use the swim plaza in the DNR grant, I don't think you're also getting the Fat Tire Bike Trail unless you wanna kick in a substantial amount, you know, several hundred thousand of all the money. So I could see a DNR grant, a good DNR grant, dollar-wise, it'd be the swim plaza. You know, this is four hundred fifty-two thousand, nowhere built. Swim Plaza, a paved trail down to it. Swim plaza and a paved trail down to it adds up to a couple, you know, roughly five hundred thousand dollars, perfectly a half of that, but you're not getting your fat tire bike trail.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna be the draw, I mean, maybe it's me, but I feel like that's the only regional draw there, secondary to the kind of the nature of walk within there. Um, I'd see paved trail if we had, you know, kind of a main trail in there. Today, um, anyone in a wheelchair having challenges walking can't navigate the park, period. But if we were able to do some main corridor paths that were paved, uh, and then from that would spur off into what we have today of just the bark trails, I think that opens it up to a lot more.
So, I'm hearing paved trail and fat tire bike trail are kind of key, there's roughly two hundred and ten thousand dollars, there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars left in that DNR grant. That probably gets you a restroom facility, but what can we swap off for that to two forty?
Then can you do a look lookout or?
Honestly, the lookout tower that's in this picture, the timber lookout tower, it's two stories.
Yep.
Was that two seventy-five in your estimate? And we increased it to three fifty because we felt like up there. We might need to go one more level up just to get that viewing, you could maybe do a two-story one for that place. But then, like I said, our fear was you're not up above the trees.
And and Larry could build that for a little cheaper?
Yeah, we don't want to build a tower that we look into trees ten feet away, that bird lockers. Bridge to nowhere.
Chief, what's your thoughts on the lookout tower down there? Seems like it would be a draw for something.
I advise, I'd say no, I'd stupid that there bike trail, I think that's gonna bring people in, I think that tower is just gonna be.
And who's?
Issues.
People jumping out.
It's not gonna be high up, it's not like a fire tower up in Southern Minnesota.
So, if we could get a destination at the end of our paved path down near the water, that could be a gathering spot, a place to, for the bikes to, you know, congregate or crossover. And then uh our paved path, uh, if we could modify that plaza to shrink it down to get into budget.
Have the shade structure over the top and then kind of build the plaza, so in the DNR grant, we're gonna have the paved trail for eighty thousand dollars. Fat tire bike trail, roughly one thirty, I might massage that up or down to make it fit the budget. And then a reduced scope on the plaza.
Yep, I like that idea.
And I, high amount of confidence that the five hundred will be moved, being that's a, just a move and not um funding that they need to come up with. So, I I don't know that we wanna spend or need to spend a tremendous amount of time on secondary list.
Correct, but I do need to have a list sent to DNR, or excuse me, to the state with the bonding agreement, so.
Staff can figure that out. Perfect. Council, looking for approval on the uh list that John just shared.
I'll move that.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Public hearing. Public hearing process. I'm just amazed we've retained this amount of people. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, Mayor, I'm leaving the wall on senior capacity level of the restroom, public hearing process. Um, currently, the way we function is that we call a public hearing at a full council meeting, uh, which means then the public hearing can't take place until the next council meeting. Uh, so I spoke to our city attorney, what I, the process I'm used to working in other communities is that at a staff level, um, and of course thorough communication with the council. Staff is able to call a public hearing, um, follow all posting requirements still, sending notices, kind of, to neighbors, so on and so forth. Um, but that allows us to be able to have the public hearing at the, basically within ten days if you can find a council meeting. Right now, uh, because we call it at a public meeting, um, it has the potential of slowing down our project by two council meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, so if there's a willingness to entertain, uh, having it called at a staff level, um, and of course keeping thorough communication with the council of when those public hearings would be. I think our developers and any homeowners residents would appreciate not having to wait to call it at a public meeting and then hold it at the next public meeting.
Council, questions, concerns, comments? Mike?
I I think that makes some sense. The only concern that I have is unless the public happens to look in the right place at the right time, they're not gonna know that the public hearing is gonna happen. Whereas when we call it, you know, during a meeting, it's on the the video, it's, you know, in the minutes, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a way that we can do like a a more uh blatant public announcement that the public hearing has been called, whether it's posted on the the city website, whether it's posted on our Facebook page? Something along those lines to get that word out to the community uh a little bit better than, you know, doing it in a in a legal newspaper or a little, little.
We'd still have to conform to our notification, right?
Yes, you would, you would still notify.
Well, yeah, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. My, what I'm saying is I think most people find out about public hearings because they they hear this meeting happening or something along those lines rather than looking in the very back pages of the of the newspaper where we we publish, so.
If you look at staff level, probably could, um, post something on the website or ensure that when we're, when we're sharing those public hearing dates, that we can look at the list that it's sent out to too, that may be an option as well.
Mayor and council, if I may, um, we can take some proactive measures, I think, for the most part for tonight's meeting, even a little traction from our Facebook site. Currently, we can take similar measures of that as a way to.
Yeah, I'd I'd be satisfied with that, I think, I think it's a, it's a good procedural way to move things along speedier.
Look for a motion to um. Do we need a motion to move that? Would that be a change of process?
You can do, you could do one just so we have a comment, and I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, we're good. We have consensus?
Yep.
Department reports, PD.
Good evening, mayor, council members, you have a report before you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Chief Hughes? Public works?
Good evening, mayor. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for John? Engineering?
Yeah, there's a quick update on our projects, Third Street North is essentially complete. East side project, I think they wrapped it on paving. So, they wrapped it on paving, so that one will be pretty much knocked out. Hey, from the school I talked about, by the end of the week, we should have everything paved with that first. But zoom in, as in your question, the concrete by the Holiday Station, I was texting the RPRF, actually it's completed and opened up.
Awesome, thank you. Um, question, one question I had was on uh inspection of ponds. Um, we just did that inspection last year, right? And we're required to do them every five years?
You gotta do them all over, five-year cycles, and we do, correct me if I'm wrong, about twenty percent each year.
Okay.
So, every five years, we're doing the cycle of ponds.
Okay, and that's a, all of that's a requirement, not a, something we just wanna do?
That's your MS four?
MS four? Good. Awesome, appreciate that. Planning, community development.
Mayor, members of council, um, I just wanna take a opportunity to highlight a few things on my report, obviously, you have the report with you in your packets. Um, but I'd like just a couple of things, um, Northern Meadows, that final plant has been screwed in construction, has begun. Just from staff, we're kind of full progress with, um, obviously, the timing of the season. Take the opportunity that I am on week three, so. Along with that, uh, the big thing. Um, in that process of elections, um, and preparing for elections and.
Oh, we are.
Covid, um, playing a large role with our decisions coming forward, um, just they're looking for election judges and, um, just want to announce that, well, that, um, with due to Covid there, some of our election judges are not able to play that role, so we are actively looking.
And I did also see that we're moving our precinct on the east side from uh Country Manor over to the church?
Yes.
Good.
And we take a tour of the church, um, Nicole and I had an opportunity to be with them, go through it, I think it'll be a experience case for us to move to.
Good.
Is there gonna be some transport from Country Manor to the polling site?
There hasn't been discussion on that, I know, um, there has been some discussion about actually just keeping it internal and providing ballots within. I'm not sure if they're gonna, at this point, allow people in and on there, I I guess I'm not sure at this time.
Yeah. Likely be a Secretary of State item, not a municipal. Um, council updates, Mike?
Nothing.
Tim? Brady?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Uh, only item I have is uh staff and myself and Tim continue to work on an item in the Wilds um park area. So, a couple of years ago, we uh made some changes there, we took out the tennis court, we added in a sport court. Um, there's been some challenge there with congregating during the Covid. Um, that has turned from sheer amount of people congregating to uh some language issue, issues. Um, and and just maybe overall behavioral issues. Um, so we're still working, and I think we need to, from a staff perspective, figure out a plan for that and how we um how we fix that, uh, so that it doesn't become a detriment to that neighborhood and, um. So, that's a, that's a item that I continue to hear about, I know Kim, Tim continues to hear about, so that's the only thing on the radar right now. That's all I got. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Tim's got a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.